All the committee to order with Mr. Ruckman to discuss the Northview Stump Sewer Project.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am actually going to cede this one to Councilman Mike Miller, as he had some questions and had brought some things up and had asked for me to call this meeting.
Yeah, as city council, we all got this email, mayor and city engineer from Mr. Beck. And I wasn't here, and I know several other council members weren't here when this whole project started, I think. And so he had several questions, and I think you should have been supplied with the email that he had sent all of council. Because if you wanted either Brian or Matt to answer those questions and bring us up to speed on that project where it's at, is it done, not done, is it underfunded, overfunded?
Council, if I may defer to our community development block grant to CDC and Brian to explain where we are on this, but also how the process works. So I think there's probably some, there are probably questions with regard to how the process of using these federal funds.
Yes, I'm sure there are.
So let me give, would you want to give a little background?
Yeah, I'm not really sure how to go about this, other than to talk about the program in a little bit. I'm Amy Shockin. I'm the owner of CDC of Ohio, Community Development Consultants of Ohio. And we've been doing your CDBG grant work since the mid 1980s. And I personally have been doing it since the mid 1980s. So, and this project actually started in 2009, when the township worked on a cost estimate to bring sewer to that area. In 2017, it came to the city's radar, and we just talked about how to get it done. The area is not, does not qualify for community development block grant funds based on the census. So we had to do a door-to-door income survey and knocked on every door, and that was in 2020. And that was with the engineering department, at which time we determined that there were 39 occupied households, 26 were low to moderate income, 24 were not currently on the sewer, or not correctly on the sewer, and that seven were low to moderate income homeowners that would qualify for connections and tap fees to be paid by the grant. So, we applied for the funds in 2021, and the grant was executed in 2022. And so the CDBG funds pay for just the sanitary sewer portion. This grant is also doing water and street repairs and things. We're only paying for the sanitary sewer, and we're only allowed to hook up low to moderate income eligible homeowners. So the way we did that is, once we got the grant funded and contract going, several letters, at least three letters, were sent out to the neighborhood, to everyone in the neighborhood that listed what the programming, what the income limits were, that you had to be a homeowner, and gave numbers to call to get application and information. And so those letters went out in August, they went out in December. And based on that, we got five eligible low to moderate income homeowners qualified.
Out of seven.
Out of seven that we thought we would have. And, you know, that was four years ago, so people moved or whatever, and it could be different at this point in time. But, so that's, that's how we did the income qualifying. And everybody that contacted our office, I think, Jillian, you can say you got seven applications and
Correct.
And five of those
Five of those qualified of the seven.
What is, what's the total number of residents on those, in that area?
There's
Or households?
Thirty-nine occupied households as of 2020.
Right, and the section of, the section south of Stump Street was already had public sewer. And there were the section, the north-south section of Northview, part of those houses had public sewer, but not all of them.
So, you just said, because I was reading that, but said, so out of, in the, in the email we got, I think it talked about 28 homes? So, so five or seven of those houses qualified, did all of those get connected?
Five, five qualified.
And then the others that may have applied or didn't apply, they didn't qualify?
Right, we, right, we only got two other applications, and you can explain why.
One was incomplete and one was over income.
Okay, and then, so that, okay, so I understand that, well, people need to qualify for federal money.
Yes.
So that project, that was made clear upfront, I just skimmed over that letter, that was made clear upfront, that you had to qualify for this grant.
Yes.
It wasn't, the city was, was not, the city was paying for everyone to get connected up to water. When you went door-to-door.
We went door-to-door multiple times, so that letter was also converted to a door hanger. Now, there was a conversation with the township, so the township, 100% of these people are in the township. They had the option, if they wanted to fund people outside of that, they could have used their ARPA money. And what we did is, we brought the list to them, the mayor and I went to the meeting, and they decided they were not going to use any ARPA money to do any additional sewer connection.
The township?
The township.
Okay.
So we, I, I mean, I look at Rob, we don't really have a way, you know, we can do work on private property with this federal money, but beyond that, we don't really have a means for the city to do this type of work on private property.
Okay.
So, and it's a little bit of a challenge.
When was that meeting, if you don't mind me asking? Do you remember ballpark of when?
Well, we had several meetings in the grant.
I mean, the townships meeting, do you have any concept of like?
Shortly after ARPA funds became available, I recall something like that, because we did have a meeting up here.
Well, no, with the, when we went to the township.
When we went to the township, yeah, that's right.
So what we had to do is, we, once, once these applications were processed, we had a final list. And so we took that list to the township and said, these are the people that qualify. Do you want to plus up and add anyone else to the list? And so that's only been maybe a month and a half.
A month and a half ago, that, that was, the one I was thinking of was the, the public meeting that Amy, you ran up here, and that was a while.
That, that one was a bit ago.
The only other option that, that, in this contract, could have been the township buying up. Now, the township chose to add asphalt to the project, in that meeting they voted to add asphalt, and then the next day they gave Terry a check, and we are paving the whole width of the road instead of fixing the trench. We've also met with the health department, they have a program, but their income limits are lower than ours. So the individual who did not complete their application could potentially go to Knox Public Health and fill out a application for EPA funds through them.
Okay, so when the project started, it was funded, because the only thing I could find, and it was applied to us with the email, was given, you know, whatever year that was, where I think it was, Ms. Woods was even asking questions about bringing projects to city council to approve that hadn't been funded. But when the project was approved by council at some point in time, it was completely funded, right, Terry?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it was completely funded.
Yeah, and then there's, we're going to, so the two, there was money to do two more hookups. So I believe we're going to process a grant agreement to move that from, because the way this, the way it's done is, there's two bins of money, so there's a bin of money for work on private property, and there's a bin of money for work in the right-of-way. We're going to ask the unused funds, we're going to try to move that to pay for work in the right-of-way. Because we're putting, we're putting money in, we're matching money.
Yeah, and it's, the community development block grant, the city gets several different kinds of them. This is a residential public infrastructure grant, and it has a prorata requirement. So the grant was funded with, well, $604,000 was the total grant for this sewer. And that included 526 for construction, $48,000 for connections, and $30,000 for administration. And then the city committed 612. So in construction, that breaks down to the CDBG paying 46%, and the city paying 54%. So if there's cost savings, we still have to follow that, you know, if we, and turn money back if the total project is less than what we thought. And if it's, but the city has
Well, so the
But, but because the, the construction costs are higher, or you want to move some money, and the more in-kind that they're having and things, it ups the whole project costs to use more of the CDBG money.
So we can use that, because, partly because the township's buying in, and we've raised the total price of the project, we can grab those two connections that we can't use, we would have to give that money back.
Right.
And we can transfer that to
To the construction side.
Because they decided to give more money for asphalt.
Yes.
Because when we, part of the deal, they, they're giving us money for the asphalt, that raises the total cost, and then we can move that money and utilize it.
So the, the project was funded, it's still funded, it's not short funding?
No.
Project, has everybody received letters, that needs to receive letters yet, about explaining why or they didn't get?
We, we started last week to draft letters to the next, like, the people who are not connected.
Okay.
We talked about that the sewer is available, we're going to, it's a complicated process. So because it's in the township, they have to get a permit from the township and a permit from the city. So we're, we're, we started last week, I don't know, Monday or Tuesday, we're going to draft a letter. But we, there's a lot of nuances, so we're trying to make sure it's well explained, that say, hey, the sewer is available, it's ready to hook up. These are the steps that you'll need, because it's a three-step process, you have to have two permits, and then you have to have your decommissioning report to the health department for the septic tanks. So of course, we, we wrote a letter, and then we realized it was, I, it was too complicated, right? So I I said, I have to, a little less complicated, my first letter was like, nah, they'll send Brian's.
Yeah.
Probably very good.
Just so I'm clear. Any other questions, council?
Yeah, just so I'm clear, if I live on this street, and, and the sewer line is going in and people are connecting, but if I don't qualify because of income, do I still have to connect?
That is up to the Knox Public Health.
Yes.
So they, it, let's, let's rewind this, none of these people are in the city of Mount Vernon. So the Knox Public Health has the jurisdiction to say, your septic tank, because some of these septic tanks are in really good condition. Like Mr. Beck's, we walked it together, we looked at it, I'm not a sanitarium, but that septic tank is reasonably new. There are a couple people that have a metal can that they got at, like, a Valvoline oil change place, those are not okay. So that, that decision is totally up to the jurisdiction of the health commissioner and his staff, not up to us. So what we're saying is sewer is available, if you would like to concentrate with your sanitariums, that's up to you. If you think you need to hook up or not, that's, that's between them and the township. Because they have to have their township permit before we're allowed to hook them up. So that, there's, that's why we have to explain the process.
In actuality, the city has no legal authority ever to force someone to connect to either water or to sewer. The health department is the only authority that can do that.
Right. So, so there was $48,000 in the grant for connect, connections, and there was five people connected, so I'm assuming there's some of that $48,000 left for connection?
Right, right.
So you said you did an original survey and sent letters to those people that you thought would be, but like, in those four years, if somebody had moved?
No, we sent letters to everybody within the last year, at all 39 households.
Okay.
And we've sent multiple letters and knocked on multiple doors in the last year, for everybody in the neighborhood saying, if you think your income is within this range, and you own your home, contact us.
But not name-specific, so like, if I just moved in and I thought, oh, that's the person who lived here before, and I didn't even open it, did they get something that was just, like, to the resident kind of thing?
Yeah, we passed it around.
But I, yeah, I saw that, but I mean, was it addressed that way to the, okay.
Yeah, and then the, the letter was also turned into a door hanger, so we put an envelope, stapled it to a door hanger, and we put those out once.
So in reality, there could be somebody out there that might still income-eligible qualify, or no?
Well, they could, and, and not replied to us.
Okay.
You know, we've, we've tried to contact them, but yeah, they may not have contacted us back.
Okay.
Of those 39, how many of those are rentals? Do we know?
Um, yes, I think 17.
So have we contacted the owner?
Well, they have to be
So they have to be owner-occupied, they have to be low-income eligible homeowners.
Yeah.
So it could be the, the owner, actual owner, the landlord of the home would not qualify.
The, the, it has to be owner-occupied.
Right.
So the homeowner has to be income-qualified, and they have to live there as their primary residence.
Okay.
Time's about up, are you, anything else?
Anything else? No, I'm satisfied, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate all you do with CDBG.
Well, thank you, we've been getting a lot of money up here, and it's showing, so.
Do you take questions?
No.
Stop meeting?
No, not right now, you can, you can talk during the public portion of the meeting. Okay, we're going to move now to Parks and Recreations with Mr. Miller, about the splash pad, Heritage Park, peace polls.
Okay, um, oh, I wrote the name down, Janie, Ricky, right?
Yes.
You could come up, please.
Yes.
Janie is from the Kokosin Rotary, right?
Yes.
And she's here to explain the donation that they have gathered up for the splash pad. And I also asked her to come and talk about their whole request with making a donation for the splash pad, which I think is a great idea, and then the peace polls. And I think the peace polls, we just needed to have some more discussion about. So Janie, I would leave up to you to explain what you, as you're wanting to do.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, thank you.
So I'm with Kokosin Valley Rotary, we're the nightclub in the district, 669 district, which runs from Mount Vernon South to Marietta, from Columbus over to the eastern border of Ohio. There are 58 clubs in that, and we received recognition as the most innovative club last year at Club Awards. So we're a little different, we are not a rotary club that just has lunch and has programs. We actually put our hands to doing projects. We have completed 26 projects this year, in the last 12 months, in the city of Arcadia, excuse me, the city of Mount Vernon, as well as the county, because we go out to Fredericktown, Danville, et cetera, East Knox School. So knowing that, there are 1.4 million Rotarians in the world. Today was pretty exciting, because the Peace Builders Club for the, for the country of Ukraine launched today. And I was part of that Zoom meeting, where they actually started a peace builder section of the rotary clubs in the Ukraine, trying to bring peace to an area that has seen conflict for a long, long time. So understand, because Mr. Miller asked me questions, I'll answer. There are seven focuses of interest or service that rotary promotes. One is, number one is peace, okay, number one is peace. Number two is the environment, trying to keep things clean, keep things healthy. Number two is fighting disease, and I think you all know that we work at Polio, and we're almost there, almost there. Economic development, which we've done some of those projects here locally. Women and children's health. Education, which we went to 11 different presentations of Josh the Otter presenting water safety around the county to all our different school districts. Clean water and sanitation, as well as good hygiene. And we were part of a international well project that went to Zambia this year. So it's kind of neat to be a small club, a club in a place like Mount Vernon, Ohio, and still be part of the big world organization. So I want you to know that, my background, in the 1960s, a man called Archie Graber was a missionary in the Congo. And the warring factions would not let supplies through to the refugee camps, food. And the UN called upon Archie Graber, one of my neighbors, said, I think they'll let us through, if you will go first. And he sat on the hood of the first jeep to go through. And because they saw Archie, they allowed the food to go through, because they had been denying it for over a month. One person, just one person, taking the first step toward creating peace between people that are warring can make the difference between life and death for all those refugees in the Congo. But it also can make a difference, people right here. My daughter, Sarah Mankins, who lives here, went to Interlock and Arts Academy, her junior and senior year of high school, and they had a peace poll. And every time something happened around the world, the students, who were from very diverse backgrounds, would come out and stand around that poll and discuss, almost like in Quaker style, discuss the issue. And each one would say how they felt about what was going on in that part of the world, and work to see if they could come up with resolve. And then they would write about it. Interlock and is known internationally for what they do around the world as far as writing, and that's what Sarah was there to study. So just know, peace polls are not something new, they're something that's been there for a long, long time. I also want you to know that, if you think that one person can make a difference or not, can one person build a bridge between here and there? Rotarians believe we can, because first of all, we have no religious basis, we're nonreligious. We have no political basis, we're not political. Rotary is something that is international, crosses across all different lines, and your mayor is a Rotarian. Thank you, Matt, no? Well, then we got to work on that, Matt.
I'm behind you.
Oh, you're a Rotarians, okay, I was thinking you were, I would have invited you a long time ago. Okay, so what happens is, one person can stand up and say, I think that we can talk, and we can work through it. A peace poll makes a spot for people to converge and become to part of that. Is rotary, rotary just peace? No, it's all these other things too. It's not political, it's not religious, it's something that stands for coming together. And I think the Quakers are the best, the Quaker houses are quite, House of Friends is quite interesting, because they're, when I studied them in college at Ashland, it was interesting to see how their plan of coming together when they were diverse could happen. There are over 40 peace polls right now in our district in Ohio. In the state of Ohio, there's over 120 polls that have been set. There's never been a place that has pushed back from peace poll, because we're not controversy. We're, we're bringing people that are diverse together. So Kokosin Valley Rotary, having said all that, would be glad to answer any of your questions. We have purchased three polls, we made a commitment last year that we, our club, will purchase up to 15 polls to be set in different places. Certainly, the school district is looking at that right now, and it'll be on their next board meeting. To come up with having a poll, just a place to say, we want to gather, we want to contemplate, we want to think about what the other side says. Now, I can tell you, I'm pretty hardcore in my thought process and the way I was brought up. But over the years, I have mellowed as I've talked to other people. If you talk to me very long, you know I'm a true capitalist, boy, they don't get much harder than me. I'm also a devout Christian. But when we come to rotary, all those things get laid aside, and we listen to the other side. Someone asked me one time, a Jewish man, who I was friends with, a doctor in Florida, he said, I don't think we should pray at rotary anymore. Well, the whole room, everybody was of one religious background, and he was the other one. He said, what would you do if a Muslim or an Arab came in? I said, and he puts down his prayer rug, I said, we would all be respectful, because that's what rotary stands for, respecting the other side and listening to their differences. So does this poll, poll have rotary? Yes, it has a rotary symbol on it, it also has four languages. Languages are English, Spanish, Portuguese, and German, excuse me, French, not Portuguese. So if you know that, and realize that, my son speaks eight languages. He was fortunate enough to be, or not, in Afghanistan for two different terms. And part of his job was to get the warlords to invite him into their homes, and he did. You know what he got to play? He started laughing out loud with all the AK-7s in the room. They were playing euchre. And he started laughing, he said, my grandpa taught me that game long ago, and they let him sit down and play. People that were very opposed to what he was there for allowed him in their home, and allowed him to play euchre. If one person can make a difference by standing up and saying, let's talk, that's this. Rotary says, let's talk, let's just get to know each other. I don't know Mr. Miller, except for last Friday. I don't really know Matt Starr a little bit, from one dinner for the Winter Sanctuary. I know Amber, because she's on my Facebook page, but do I really know her? And sitting down, and, or standing around a peace poll, standing is the best, because it gets the job done quicker. But, yeah, if you think about it, a peace poll in your park, and we're talking about Ariel Foundation, we haven't said where. We'd like to see one at Harmony Park, because the kids are there, and kids will ask questions about what does peace mean? Well, it's a good opportunity to talk about it. And then we'd like to see one at Riverside, because the splash pad is going in, and the splash pad is something that we requested permission to raise money, we do, we have a check for $5,000 we'd like to present to the city to help with, we said splash pad park improvements. So if you needed something for the bathroom, you could use it for that. But when we go through, and we look at Ariel Riverside and Harmony, it covers a lot of the area where kids and families are, and they can sit and talk. So, yes, we'd like to give you the money, if you don't want it, that's a problem, but problems can be solved. We'd like to set three peace polls, and we're willing to pay for the cost of setting them. We're willing to work with your Parks Department. I'm a, I'm a hands-on person.
Well, thanks for coming, because we only talked three times, I think three times on the phone Friday, because that was, the first I had heard of this was Friday through an email. And so we did, we had several different conversations about it, and that's why I wanted you to come and talk today to give, from rotary, talk about why. I think we need to have, just like tonight, we have, there's resolutions that are prepared for council, for council to vote on whether to accept things or not accept things. The donation for the splash pad and all that, yes, I don't think that's an issue whatsoever, we just need a resolution to do that. The peace polls, like me and you had discussed, I just had questions that I need to find out. Like, I got messages out to the city today, asking about, are there any policies or procedures and writing about accepting different things from different organizations? A concern that I did have is, I guess I kind of look at these as, they're like a monument.
Excuse me, did you have that, or the committee had that?
What?
You said you sent something out today, was the concern was with you?
Today, I sent it to Tanner and to the City Parks Director.
I'm asking if the concern was from you or from one of the other members?
Well, it's for me, because I'm also the Parks Chair.
I understand that.
And so I represent the entire council on the Parks Chair. And I've had conversations with other council members, and we have discussed this today, actually. So the concern is, is that, that I have, I expressed to you, is one of any other, and I got to talk to Rob about this, and that's why I asked about city policies and procedures, is what if any other organization wanted to place something in a park? And it's even a peace monument, because it's, it's a rotary project. I, again, it is not religious, it's not political, I completely I completely understand that.
We are inclusive, not exclusive.
I don't have any problem with that. But what if another organization, if Exchange Club or CARE or any other civic organization wants to put something in a city park? I just don't want to start something. And now we have 20 other people lined up wanting to do the same thing. I don't know the legality of that. And it takes a little bit of time to figure that portion of it out. And that's why I asked you to come tonight for that reason.
Do you have any other questions?
That was the biggest question I had is...
But is there any other question?
I'm looking down my list here. Let's see. I have a question about monuments. Do we have city policies or written directives that govern how they're placed, when they're placed? Is there a written long-term, would there be a written long-term care, written agreement for long-term maintenance? I know they're just poles, but they're going to get spray painted. They're going to get knocked over. So in 10 years, is there something in writing that's going to require rotary or someone besides the city to have to maintain it? And, but the biggest is, does this open the city up to other groups wanting to come in and put things in, and would we have to allow them? And that's a legal question for the law director. So it takes more than a day to gather all that information.
Well, to me, it sounds like, we've accepted other things, like the mini Statue of Liberty that's going in there. And it comes before council, and council makes a decision, either we're going to accept it or not.
Right.
So this is an issue, and council has the jurisdiction. We don't have a special policy on everything. It comes before council, and council makes a decision.
As a matter of law, the administration cannot accept things. Council has to accept things on behalf of the city. So the seven of you will have that vote.
Well, that's pretty much the policy.
Yes, I mean, that's what, I mean, so if the administration had a policy, it really wouldn't matter because...
Because we still have to accept it or not accept it.
Yes, the seven of you have to make that decision.
And to clarify, Mr. Miller reached out to request if there was a policy, not if we had a policy. He was just asking if that existed.
So, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, you raised your hand first.
Okay. So I was a student rotarian just a couple of years ago in college.
Yes.
And then...
A rotor act.
It's just been a couple of years.
I started Interact. I started Interact in Waverly, Ohio.
It was good. But my question, which is legit, are there other, do these get placed in other parks like this? Is this a regular occurrence that they do go into city parks?
Yes. Actually, there's a website called the Peace Poll Project, which if anybody logs in and puts their poll there, you can see where they are all over the world. And I know that, I'm going to Turkey in February as part of the International Peace Commission there and being part of the conference. And that being said, that peace poll is one of the things that we're going to be setting in Turkey. I think that when you understand how inclusive rotary is and how much we lay everything down when we come in the door about how we feel about things, that you get it. And if, knowing that Tanner was part of the Interact and Mel was part of the rotor act, thus the high school and then the college up to 30s, part of rotary. We really try to teach people how to get along. I know that when many Ohio farmers were facing bankruptcy in 1970, I accidentally ran into Delbert Latta, who was whip of the house. And because of what I was doing with the Ohio pork producers, I got to sit beside him and got a special invitation, actually, by him because he did something that he shouldn't have done to the pork producers. And I got sent as the person, as a high school senior, to talk to Mr. Latta. Wow, if you don't feel overwhelmed by that. But I wasn't because I knew what was happening on the family farms here in Ohio and how many people were close to bankruptcy because the prices were so low because of a glut. And we sat and talked. I said, "Do you realize how many pounds of meat your military eats?" And he said, "No." I said, "Well, I know." I said, "And if you would just buy pork for 90 days, the glut would be over, and you would save this many family farms in Ohio." And he said, "I can do that." You know, that, our conversation by a high school senior made the difference in so many farms in Ohio. It's because I decided to talk to a man that I thought wasn't talkable to. And that's what this peace poll does. People that we don't think we can talk to, we start a conversation, and we see what we can do. I just think that rotary, I'm all in about rotary. I'm all in about two things in my life, and this is one, that rotary can make a difference. And I believe in it substantially, whether you're part of the noon or the nightclub. We can make a difference. And it doesn't take an army of people. It just takes one or two to make a difference in people's lives. If you have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer.
I had two questions. Well, maybe I only have one. Do you have a visual of these peace polls that, or are they all different? Or can we see them at the Peace Poll Project?
If you look at the Peace Poll Project, we only did the four-language one, not the eight-language one. There is an eight-language one, and our goal is to set three every year. So we've started by already talking to the high school because that's, junior high is a great place to have these conversations start. But we're going to be setting, we hope, 15 around the county. So I can shoot you a picture?
Jane, I believe the United Methodist Church over here on Gay Street has one.
One poll?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you drive up Gay Street, take a look.
Yeah, and I know.
But I can shoot you a email, too.
Thank you.
I mean, a picture because they're on the website. There's three in my garage. I'm not parking in my garage right now for many reasons, and peace polls are one.
Okay, I'll get back with you by the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Next council meeting? Two weeks? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your time. Move now a little bit ahead of time to the sale of recreational marijuana with Land and Use Development, Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank our clerk because this was a very last-minute request, and he did a phenomenal job. I would not have done this for myself. So if I had been in his shoes, I would have said, "Too bad." So thank you so much for printing these off for everyone. We are not voting on this tonight. This is an amended version with some corrections or changes. Specifically, I think it's important to note that this would be a moratorium through 30 days after the general election, which will be held November 5th, 2024. And it changes some of the language with regard to what sale is. Because Mr. Mahan pointed out, I think, a really valid point about giving versus selling. The thought, actually, I will let Rob describe this a little bit more because he's smarter than I am.
I wouldn't know I'd say that, but...
But I just want council to know, I don't plan to vote on this tonight. This is really just to continue to gather information and to share thoughts on it.
The mayor had raised the possibility of us, of how we're going to sort of vote on this. And so this is the first draft of a potential moratorium. And we're currently working with the Ohio Municipal League and the Ohio Municipal Attorneys Association to see if we can do what we'd like to do as far as the, whether we can put this on the ballot or not. We'll have that information hopefully at some point beginning of next week so that we can share that with you before the meeting. But if we are able to do this, this is how we would suggest to proceed with a moratorium until the vote. If we can't, we'll certainly solicit other suggestions. The other significant change on here is that there will be, as Mr. Mahan pointed out at the last meeting, that our definition of sale was quite likely overbroad. And so I have scaled it back based upon comments that I received from him.
So I...
So in order to go to the ballot, it needs to be like 90 days before and all that. And where are we? Can we, as city...
Yeah. If the city, if we have that authority, we have the authority to put certain things on, and we're trying to see if it fits within one of those statutorily allowable reasons. And if we are, the 90 days isn't until beginning of August. So we will have the 90 days to do it if we have the legal authority.
So it comes before council to put it on the ballot, or who does that?
Well, we're looking to see if there's the ability for council to do that. Council, as it fits within one of the certain statutory allowable areas.
Other questions?
I'm moving. Beginning of August is coming up pretty fast. All right. Any other questions on marijuana? Move now to zoning code update, again with Mrs. Keener on land and use development.
So did administration or the law office receive any questions from city council?
Nope.
I didn't figure so.
What about mine that I asked at the last meeting about the parking for...
Oh, parking, that's...
And then there was one about PND. That means residential and commercial can be in the same zone. I asked those two questions last time.
Parking spaces for the Airbnb.
That was in there that businesses would, at their discretion, be able to choose how many lots, parking spaces they had. But places like Airbnb and Bed and Breakfast would have to have two per sleeping quarter or something like that.
Yeah, I looked at that, and I need to get with our consultant because I'm a little confused by that. So I want to make sure that I have that. But I will send an email by the end of the week so that everyone has that answer before the next one.
And then I don't remember exactly what my question was now, but I remember the PND, it was something about commercial and residential can now be in the same plan.
That is very much like...
If I remember it correctly, if there would be a new development, like a PND development, and they wanted to include like a general store to serve, that would essentially be a mixing of residential and...
I think my question was more of, could anything that's currently zoned that way then?
Well, no, because they would, because anything that's currently there has a development plan. And if they have a development plan, they would have to come back to count. Is that any sort of change like that to mix residential and commercial would be a major change, and that would require the development plan to come back before council. So they could ask council to do that. But council here would have the ability to make that decision.
Okay.
But that change would also take into account areas like the downtown area where...
But that's not PND.
No, but that's similar, that are like the downtown. But that is something that could potentially be somewhere else. That type of mixed-use development is what I'm trying to say.
This might be a good place to review for us that the new zoning code is not called PND. It's called, it's actually being reduced to PD, and there is a difference. So if you could review that for us, this might be a good time to...
The difference here is this, there are actually two planned development types of zoning in our current map. There is the traditional planned neighborhood development. And then, four years ago, three years ago, council created the planned...
Commercial development district.
And we did that mostly for the development out there, former Rolls Royce, former Siemens, whatever they're called.
Heartland Commerce Park.
Right.
Stick with the brand.
So we created that. What our consultant did here was to take the two types of planned development and merge them into a single one. Because, at least to her, and I think that all of us agreed, that having two planned development types of districts was just overkill. And that we had, because the PCDD that we created was based very much so on the PND with just some commercial add-ons to allow the people at Heartland Commerce Park to get up and running.
This zoning, though, does not change the process for those coming through municipal planning and council?
As we just saw recently, the Heartland Commerce Park came back to municipal planning with their sign plan for the entire district. Because this allowed them to do sort of signs for all of the buildings and all of the interior next year. So it was all consistent for that one development district rather than each and every person or company, as they would sell one of their buildings, to then decide what to do with their own signs. Well, this way, everything is going to be the same, going back to the planned nature of the whole development.
Any other questions? I would ask Tanner if you could call Wendy and make sure she's at the public hearing for me. I would super appreciate it. Just so council is aware, we do have the public hearing at the next committee meeting or, yeah, the next committee meeting at the council meeting, which is July 22nd?
Yes.
Fair week.
Fair week. And your cowboy boots. And if that's all, I will call the meeting and let everybody have a long break.
All right. During that meeting, and if people want to speak on matters of public concern, I have two people wanting to speak now. If other people want to speak, please see the clerk and fill out a form. And a reminder to council, the high legislature did pass a law that we all need to have a training in fraud alert. And it only takes seven minutes, I think. It took J. 8, so I'm not sure.
He's internet challenged.
So it's a short period. You have to do that, is it every four years?
He's on fast forward.
There's a time period.
Well, no, this just passed.
I know, but...
It's a one-time thing.
The deadline, the deadline is September 28.
No, in the video, he said it was either every two years or every four years.
There's a period of time it lasts.
Well, that's a second.
Four, is it four?
Well, I think that part of it is because council members' terms are only two years, you're going to have to do it every two years because suddenly you're a new employee again.
That's seven minutes for most of you and eight minutes for Jay every two years.
So, Mr. President, we have a little extra time, and we spent so much time. It was good time to hear from Rotary. Could we have...
Wait, before I finish, I just want to make sure that, once you finish it, that you either email your certificate to Todd or you bring a hard copy into Todd. So he has a record of having, that you've done, completed that, so we're done it. And secondly, I did receive a phone call today, again, asking people that are watching this by video, council using their cell phones a lot during council meetings. If it deals with council business, it's one thing. If it's personal business, please don't do that. Because people see you doing that, and they want to make sure you're paying attention to what we're doing.
I know what a rotary poll looks like now because of my phone, by the way.
Okay.
I could describe a peace poll.
Since we have a few minutes, and I gave Rotary all the time to explain that, what they're doing, then we have a few minutes. Could we get a brief update on the splash pad and the C.A. and C. railroad, since we didn't get that covered? Is that okay with council?
Right. If you want to keep it short to like five or eight minutes, that's fine.
Sure. Okay, C.A. and C., AKA Liberty Plaza, AKA...
American Heritage Park. And to clarify, there was a...
Heritage Center Park.
Heritage Center Park that was former, that is now River View Park. So we want to make sure that we're separating those. This is American Heritage Park that will be the campus of what is currently the C.A. and C. depot. So a great unveiling to come, TBD.
Rotary started at Heritage Park.
And that was a rotary project.
That was a rotary park.
We paid her to be here.
Yeah. So I couldn't get my internet to work, but I'll defer to Mr. Scott. I believe you're appropriating $345,000 of additional funds tonight. Yes, there we go, highlighted. Combination. Combination of, a little bit more than that. So we have the project, we have opened the bids. Bid is, low bid was $513,344.80, but they had a math error, so it's $513,344 without the 80 cents. So we're getting a discount over the discount. So Terry, in your Resolution 2024-66, we'll be appropriating the money from our friends, our good friends with the ODNR, $19,040. And then there will be appropriating the donation from Ariel Foundation, that's $345. And with the $200,000, that is part of the budget, we have the money to do the project. We had the pre-construction meeting today at 3:00, and work could start as early as next Monday. We're coordinating on the delivery of the Liberty statue, that we're not sure exactly how that process will work, but we're, we'll be starting on that. The roofing project is nearing completion, they're working on the rotted wood, the roof's done, but then we're also doing gutters and touch-up to the wood. The splash pad is scheduled to go out to bid on Thursday, with the bid opening to be the first Thursday in August. The project's had some ups and downs, we've brought it at this point, we believe that it is within budget, and we'll find out when the bid opens. So we've, our consultants and staff have worked hundreds of hours trying to get the splash pad to fit within the budget and the site, and so we would be building the splash pad, three restrooms, a control room. We've taken out the outdoor benches and shrubbery, we've changed the materials of the building a couple of times to bring it to where it's heavily insulated, but, you know, we're putting the stainless steel fixtures in so that it's vandal-resistant. So it's a balancing act of trying to get it in budget and be fully functional, so...
And we anticipate going out to bid for that this week.
Thursday.
Thursday.
So, everything's put together, the publications are all in process, but, you know, we've got a lot of time.
You said you already had a bid.
Okay, two projects.
That was for Liberty project.
So, yeah, about two projects. So, C.A. and C., we are going to do a contract award this week, splash pad goes out to bid this week. So two different parks, two different projects. Sorry, I was told to talk fast. I'm not an auctioneer, but...
Just plays one on TV. We'd like to.
Yeah, questions?
No, I got it, thanks, but...
Yeah.
Splash pad, splash pad sits on High Street. Safety barriers?
Yes, so we did, we have, from the original version, did not have a fence, the new version does have a fence for the, for the south, particularly the south side. So it will be, if you're a parent, we, you would, you know, we have the, we'll have a pavilion, you would be able to sit in the pavilion. If your child is at the Rotary playground next to, you'd be able to see that child. You have a child at the splash pad, and if you turn around, and you have another child on the, to the further north in the grass area, you would be able to kind of, you'd have a full view of everything except for the handicap parking area.
First design.
When can we soon get wet in the splash pad? What's the target date for this to be in operation?
The target date is May 11th, 2025. So we will be working through the winter to make this successful.
What type of a fence would that be, Brian?
It's kind of like a pool, a pool fence.
One that keeps kids in.
So it's something that's visible?
Yeah, you can see through it. So you think about like a pool fence where it's, you can't get your head stuck in it at any age, but it's open, and, yeah, so you can see through.
Want to make a bet?
Not a...
It's not a lacquer.
We were thinking about, we were thinking about making it out of hemp rope, but we were, we've got to wait on this next vote.
Yeah.
So it would be wooden, perhaps wooden with a hemp rope, but we're not sure if we're allowed to use hemp.
That would be nautical.
Yeah.
Right, because the idea is this is Captain Hunter's Landing, so we were thinking about making a, as ship-like as we can. We also are going to, part of the cost savings, we're going to take the tiles from the B&amp;O depot and use that to roof the building. So we're going to reuse the tiles that we preserved from, to make it kind of have that Spanish pirate look.
So, out to bid Thursday?
Yes.
I mean, that's what the community wants to know, is out to bid.
It's out to bid, yep. There's a little bit more in my week, or by twice-a-month report, if everybody got that, there's a little more in there if you want to read about it.
Thank you. Thank you for those communications.
Yeah, I think Tanner's, I got to give him a lot of credit, this was very well orchestrated, we're super happy to, because, you know, we want to focus on what you want to know about. So the idea is if, hey, next report, if you want to know something, send us a quick note, and we can, I don't want to tell you about every single detail of every project, but the top couple of things, we're totally excited to do that. A lot of energy in our department head meeting about those reports, and I think it'll be really helpful to get the word out.
I know, I replied to all, to everybody, I think that was on that initial email, this is a great, wonderful thing that has started.
Yeah, and I think you've asked for that for quite a while.
Yes, and yes, me and others have asked for more communication, and this is a long way to go.
Yep.
It's wonderful.
All right, another minute, we got a little bit of time left. Give us a quick update on the whole Dan Emmett area. I mean, my wife's a teacher there, and so she's like, "Is that going to be ready before school starts?" So where, are they moving well? They're blocking all the roads off, so, but that's okay.
Right, it'll be ready August 1st, 2025, so there will be some pain through the process, but they're on a rapid pace, so the east-west part, you know, we have the sanitary sewer replaced, we, like a sewing machine, we backed up, and now we're replacing the storm sewer. So Mansfield, for that project, Mansfield will be, should be open for the fair and for school. Now, the Noose part will be removed during school, where the goal is to get the playground work and all that stuff done. I'm not sure of the exact schedule, but we're, we have two people up there watching them full-time and cracking the whip, so... They are, it's a great contractor, and things are, things are happening pretty, pretty quick, so...
I know the road right there, at the light, at whatever it is, Noose in Mansfield, is like really rough.
Right.
But I don't know if that'll be...
That's...
Patched that a little bit before we get into heavier traffic for fall?
Part of that's Columbia Gas, but then we will also be tearing part of that up, so that'll be, we'll get that cleaned up.
Okay.
Depending on which, which square is whose responsibility, we'll get it cleaned up. Other questions?
So since we're asking about all the projects, how about Catherine Street?
Well, Catherine Street, I mean, they're full blast, I think the driveway approaches, sidewalk, curb and gutter are finished, and Jason was out with them setting grade, and the road will, the road bed, the concrete seven-inch road bed will be coming soon, and then we'll be...
They started today. They put down from Koshokton to about halfway south from Koshokton towards Jessup.
Yeah, I didn't get to the site today, but it's, there were cement trucks on High Street, so they're, they're rolling, and then the bricks will be, the bricks are cleaned, palletized, so before the last time, the different company, they hauled the bricks, cleaned them later, this company cleaned the bricks and then stacked, so the bricks should, they'll come right behind as soon as they can and lay bricks. So, we're on, on schedule.
Anything else? Actually, extra time?
Yeah.
We're now in recess. Until 7:30 PM, we begin the legislative portion of the meeting.